I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for October 6th, 2025. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Commissioner Roberts?
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Present.
Commissioner Banky?
Present.
Commissioner Miller?
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Present.
Commissioner Gauss?
Present.
All Commissioner members, present. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support. We have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please. Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried. At this time, we will have public comment regarding items on the agenda. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. We will begin inside the city chambers first. When we have exhausted all public comment regarding items on the agenda inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now.
Keith Muller, City of Adrian. Last month's agenda, you did a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month with five countries. I went home and did a Google search of them five countries. And each one of them five countries that we are, had the proclamation for have a significant impact on the United States drug problem.
This is for items on the agenda? You can do this public comment at the end of the meeting, though.
This is on the agenda because you want to do this, uh...
It's not the Hispanic Heritage?
Huh?
Oh, for the minutes? Is that why you're saying that?
Well, I brought it up because it's in the meeting for the minutes. So you're approving that agenda?
Oh, all right. That's, yeah, let's go. Go ahead.
Anyways, what I want, what I want to know is, since we can have a proclamation for the five drugs countries that are ruining our country, and I have no problem with the people, it's all the drug cartels that come from that. I'd like to see October 14th as Charlie Kirk Day, and I'd like to have the mayor make a proclamation to that. I mean, he is for God, country, and family. What more wholesome can you get for America? That's what I'm, that's what I'm standing up here for, and that's what I'd like to see. And I'd like to know that before the end of the night, if there is going to be a proclamation. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, inside the chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants regarding items on the agenda. Hearing no public comment, we will now move on to proclamations. I will come around if you want to meet me at the front, and we will do the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Before I present...
Ooh, I'm really loud. Before I present this proclamation, we have Catherine Cobb Safe House here, and would you like to just say a few words about what you do and, you know, just give us a little information, please, and thank you.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm Candy Harper with the Catherine Cobb Safe House. I am the Community Outreach Coordinator. I've been the legal advocate for the last 30 years, moving into this new position. Millions face abuse behind closed doors every, each and every day by those that say that I love you. Those intimate partner violence leaves lasting scars, not only on the victims, but also on the children that have to live in the homes and see what love looks like. Love should never hurt. In relationships, should, love should make each other stronger, not break someone down. If you know someone who's being abused, show love and not judgment. The Catherine Cobb Safe House is a safe space, offering supportive services each and every day, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We offer legal help. We offer legal support, which is just court accompaniment, assistance with personal protection orders accompanied through the court process. We have lead advocates that will work with our survivors each and every day to help build them up, help them to recognize their strength and their, their value, and also to help them set goals for themselves. We have a children's advocate that helps our children understand the normalcy of what everyday living could be and should be like, celebrating holidays, celebrating birthdays. We have a 24-hour crisis hotline. We have a transitional housing program. We have volunteers, and we just have advocates 24 hours a day to answer the crisis line. Show love, not judgment. Safe love creates safe families, and safe families creates a safer world. And that is what we're working for each and every day. So thank you so much, Mayor, for offering this proclamation to us today. So whereas, on average, 20 people per minute are abused by an intimate partner in the United States, equating to more than 10 million women and men each year, and whereas one in four women and one in seven men have been victims of severe physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime, and whereas, on a typical day, there are more than 20,000 calls placed to domestic violence hotlines nationwide, and whereas, one in 15 children are exposed to intimate partner violence. Psychological, and sexual abuse. It's a real domestic violence awareness. It provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical services and assistance to victims. Now therefore I, Angela Sore Heath, Mayor of the City of Adrian, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens to stand together against domestic violence and to offer support and understanding to survivors and participate in domestic violence awareness activities. And you will see purple ribbons. They're over by the courthouse, by the judicial building. It's also why I'm wearing purple because it's the, it is the color for Domestic Abuse Awareness Month. So that's why you do see those ribbons that are over there by the courthouse and the judicial building. So, thank you very much.
At this time, we will move on to our informational discussion topics, and we are going to begin with the Monument Park Restoration Presentation by Ken Thompson. Jeremiah, are you going to go up there too? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Yep, as you requested, we're moving forward with the, kind of excited about the project now that we have it in our hands. Been working with Ken over the last few weeks, kind of getting some clarity and understanding. And so as you requested, Ken's here tonight to kind of discuss and just highlight some of the stuff that he's going to be doing this spring. So, Ken, if you come up.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Good evening, and thanks for inviting me. Briefly, what I was going to do is just cover what we intend to do to the monument. I first looked at the monument to assess its condition nearly 10 years ago, and I have since been back a few more times to update that assessment, most recently in May. And to start out with, the entire sculpture needs to be washed. I don't know as though it's ever been washed. There's no one that have any records of that. But we'll use a material, it's a non-aggressive material called tri-sodium phosphate, to clean a lot of the pollution dirt and the bird guano and such off of the sculpture. Once we have it cleaned, there is a portion of the, at the very top of the monument, there's a scroll, and one of the corners of those scrolls has broken off, and we'll re-carve a new piece and attach it using stainless steel pins and epoxy. Once we have that done, there are several other places we'll, we'll do what's called a Dutchman. It's just a nickname for a repair. It's a small nick or something. We'll, we'll replace a piece of sandstone like, of like nature, and once again, using epoxy, and where possible, we'll put stainless steel pins in. Once that is completed, we intend to caulk all the seams on the piece. We'll use a urethane caulk, which has a better coefficient of expansion than the caucks that would have possibly been used in when this piece was made. And then we'll also, around the base of the monument, re-tuck point. There are some gaps there that are large enough you could stick your hand into. I'm pretty sure there's probably a few mice living in there, but we're going to tuck point them shut, shut, so we can keep that sort of out. We will also refurbish the eight bronze plaques that are around the monument. What we'll do is clean them thoroughly to get the corrosion off of them. We will paint the background. It's called Leather Brown is the color. And then we will go over the face of them and highlight the text so it shows up as a goldish color. Once that's done, we'll shoot it with a clear acrylic that will keep the shine on there about 10 years. When all of that is done, oh, that's one other thing. There's the Spanish War, World War I, World War II, and the Korean War monuments. I want to clean those up too. As long as we're doing one, let's, let's do them all. We're going to be there, so we'll take care of them all. Once we're finished with the column, we will seal it with a sealant impregnation, which a fair example is Thompson's Water Seal. No family connection. But it, it, it's a one-way sealer. It lets moisture out, but not moisture in. There's a number of folks around the country that use much more aggressive sealers, and the problem with those is they're too good. It'll actually tear the stone apart. This won't be. Although the one caveat is, it should be repeated every couple of years. Pursuant to this, there are some other statues and monuments and such in town, which... I've lived in this town since 1973, and I have a good sense of what gets done and what doesn't get done in the way of sculptures. It's my love and my life. But like, for instance, Harry Kimblefee. Since Tony Proddakis put that piece in 20 years ago, it has not been touched. It's a bronze, and it should be cleaned and waxed at least every two years. There's the Millennium Project, which I was heavily involved in, that we did back in the year 2000. That piece is all bronze. Two years later, I went out there with my own volition and cleaned all the columns and waxed them myself, but they've not been done since then. There's also, uh, forgive me, the piece next to the library. I should know it. We moved her the granite piece. Laura Havlin, thanks so much. She hasn't had anything done to her since we moved her, when that was probably about 10 years ago. So what my point is to you folks is, without a lot of work, we could get you on a program that every year or two, everything is assessed, it's outlined what needs to be done. There's a certain portions of this work I will gladly train folks to do. You don't have to hire me. Trust me, I got plenty of work. But I would gladly show people how to do the work. It's not, we're not smashing atoms here. And so that they can be taken care of, because we have a job as, we own it, we're stewards, we need to take care of it. Just like any building or any park that you've got in town. So at any rate, can I answer any questions?
Can you refresh my memory? Where's the Millennium?
It's in Comstock Park.
Oh, that, okay, yes, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, and when we're, in regards to Monument Park, so you're saying the seal, the Thompson Water Seal should be every year or two, but?
Years.
Two years, okay.
It's, it's, it's something that needs to be repeated. It's, you know, like, if you've ever used Thompson Water Seal, it's not actually the product I'm using. The product I'm using is made in Germany. It's called Akimi. But it's similar. So if you ever use Thompson Water Seal, say, to seal your, your concrete patio, eventually it wears off, it stops shedding water, and it needs to be repeated. It's just the nature of things.
So is there, so in regards to Monument Park, is there anything that we need to already put on that calendar for the future for a bigger upgrade, like something that, or upkeep, sorry, that, something that would be beyond maybe our scope, not just that, like something you could teach somebody? Is there something like, we need to have, you know, somebody like you or you come back in like 10 years and take a look, or five, or is there a timeline where we should have? Somebody, okay.
You'd be amazed what can happen, even in a year. I do a lot of work for the city of Toledo. They have over 90 pieces of outdoor sculpture. And we're on a three-year cycle. We do 30 of them a year. And, but they're all assessed once a year. So that, because things can happen, if you're not right there keeping an eye on it all the time, things just happen. You know, graffiti happens, degradation happens, you know, the ground heaves. You just don't see it unless you're there all the time. So at least once a year, to have somebody go out and lay eyes on it and make sure everything's right. Personally, I'm a big fan of a photographic record. When you go out and do it, take a picture from four directions. The next year you go out, take the same picture from the same four directions, so you can compare one another. What I've done with the piece in Monument Park, I have about 200 photographs of it. And what I did when we reassessed it in May, the first time we assessed it 10 years ago, we used a man lift, so it could really get up and take a look. And we photographed it all the way down on all four sides, every section. In May, when we reassessed it, we used a drone to fly around it and photograph it. And I did a comparison between my 10-year-old photographs and my current photographs. And I found more degradation, but it wasn't enough to get real picky about, and go, oh, well, this is going to change the price a lot. None of that. I mean, it's... Trust me, if you did this kind of work, you're not getting rich. I'm not getting rich. I do it because I love the work, and I love sculpture and what it means.
Is it something that we could get a proposal on, how much it would cost us every year or two? Jeremiah could put that together for an upcoming meeting, so that we can maintain all the monuments and sculptures in all of our parks, and we don't run into this again?
Yeah, you know, if you keep up on it, you don't end up with that big balloon at the end. It's all of a sudden a lot of money. You know, it's, it's a scary thing. One other thing you can do, I've seen other cities do it, is you can start a fund in your budget. Doesn't have to be a lot of money, but if you were socking away, say, $1,000 a year, and putting it in your public art fund for maintenance, so when the time comes to actually do some work, you've got the money already sitting there. You know, when the city of Toledo, when they commission a piece of sculpture, they take 10% of the budget for that sculpture and set it aside for future maintenance, because we all know everything's going to have to get fixed at some point or another. Nothing is forever.
What do you see as your timeline for when you would begin, and how long do you see the project lasting?
Well, right now, I could lock my doors and still be working in a year and a half, okay?
That's all.
Work, work is not a problem. But what, it depends on the weather this winter. If it's a mild winter, we may come out and do it in January. If it's a typical winter that we all knew from 20 years ago, it would probably be more like April. But if the weather breaks, and we've got like a week and a half, two weeks of, of above freezing weather, I mean, working in the cold doesn't bother us, then we could come out and, and do the work.
Thank you.
Ken? Hey, Doug. Does any part or piece of that go back to your studio, or are you doing all of it on location? It's all onsite. Now, we're not going to do anything to harm the piece the way it is. A lot of times, if, you know, trying to disassemble something that's that old, you're more apt to do more damage than good. Well, if there's nothing else. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, Simone.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, are there any other items that you would like to discuss during this time? All right. May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please. Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to our regular agenda, Resolution R25-055 is from the Fire Department. It is a resolution to authorize the use of grant funds toward the cost of warranty, cleaning, and calibration of SCBA fit testing units. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support?
Are there any Commissioner comments or discussion on that? We have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry and Commissioner Banky, with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please. Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carried. At this time, we will have public comment. It does not have to be in regards to anything that was on the agenda for tonight. We will start inside the city chambers first. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, which you will see on the screen. And for the record, please state your name and place of residence. And we will begin inside the chambers first. When we have exhausted all comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now.
Hi, Gail Dunaway, Adrian. First of all, I need to start out and say thank you to all who were involved in paving our street. It now has pretty lines on it. I can actually get into my new garage that I spent a lot of money for. The leak at Chestnut and Elm Street, one of the utilities guys was so kind to explain to me the leak wasn't at the corner, it was up the hill on Chestnut Street. There, so there is a reason why they call this whole neighborhood Dutch Hill. And if you're interested, I'll show you where the Dutch Hill Market is and where the Dutch Hill Tavern used to be. Moving on, and putting my badge on to make me official. Wrong side. Anyways, master gardener here. Want to talk about trees and their consequences. Linden trees. Okay. Deciduous trees. No noticeable fall foliage. Very dense, and grows to 40 feet tall, 50, 30 wide. Tolerates just about anything, everything. In other words, it's kind of a glorified weed. It belongs to the mallow family, and there's a caterpillar, an aphid that loves to inhabit the upper reaches. And it creates a sooty mold-like substance. The new sidewalk, it's already starting to turn charcoal gray. I have to bleach and scrub my railings. I should do it like every other week. It's already getting dirty again, and they're really not recommended for any place that's paved. So there are consequences of what we put in, whether you, you know, every, all throughout the day, we have consequences of our actions. So I saw on Facebook, some guy was scrolling through, I'll be in just a couple more seconds. He was bragging how he had his streets swept every week. It's like, we're lucky to get it twice a year. They're really nasty, and I have some stuff for show and tell I can show you later. But thank you. I'll get the magnet later.
Aaron Chesure, City of Adrian resident. Good evening, Commissioners. I just want to take a moment to sincerely thank you for recognizing both Hispanic Heritage Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Month with your proclamations. For many of us in Adrian, these acknowledgements mean so much. The Hispanic Heritage Proclamation reminds our community that our stories, our traditions, and our hard work are woven into the very fabric of this city, and that we belong and we are seen. And the Domestic Violence Awareness Proclamation gives hope and strength to survivors and our families who have endured so much. It says, "You are not alone. This city stands with you." Thank you for choosing compassion, inclusion, and awareness, for using your voices to uplift ours. When you are, when you honor our people and protect our most vulnerable, you make Adrian stronger. Thank you for standing with us.
Ben Mormon, City of Adrian resident. Thank you for honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. I am so tired of racism finding its way into every nook and cranny of every space that we have with unsubstantiated facts and figures. So I appreciate seeing people over politics. Thank you.
Ernest, City of Adrian. One thing, um, I, um, went by every sidewalk, well, sidewalks that I walk, which is West Hun Street, which is right over by Subway, that's messed up. Also, on Broad Street, there's a sidewalk completely messed up, which is a safety hazard. I got a photo of that. Also, loud exhaust early in the morning, that's the issue. People got kids. People calling into dispatch about loud exhaust, partying, that's the issue. reckless driving on side streets, that's the issue. I'm not going to worry about that one. Violence and criminal activity on East, East Side of Adrian. Once again, that's Ear Street Park and South Tecumseh. That has got to stop. That's his school bus, um, drop-off and pickup. It's also connected to a playground where kids have to, uh, have fun, have a great time. They can't do that because you got drug activity, alcohol, violence, gun violence, and stabbing. That's enough of that one. Also, um, is also, the month of October is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And, um, and also support domestic violence awareness because of my purple ribbon, nonstop. I support all calls. Also, there need to be, um, more police force to stop the gun violence and other criminal activity that would go on. I see it with my own eyes, is, once again, the east side of Adrian. To make Adrian safer, gun violence and other activity has got to stop. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. Rob Trabino, Adrian resident. Hispanic Heritage Month means a lot to me. I was greatly appreciated the city last commission meeting presented to Mayor, reading the proclamation. I'm a second generation. I'm a second-generation American Hispanic. My parents came from Texas a long time ago, were migrants with their families many years, coming back and forth. And they made Lenway County their home. Myself and my sisters were all born at Bixby Hospital. Proud to say Adrian's our home. At one time, my mom had a hair salon, my uncle had a hair salon in Adrian, and my aunt had a hair salon. So you had three Hispanic businesses in the early 70s that were all Hispanic. My dad worked at a bank and worked his way up. He eventually retired as a vice president of the bank. I was extremely proud of my father. At one point, I worked for the city of Adrian as a police officer. So I really appreciate all the great things Hispanic people do in this community. So thank you.
And for my second act. I'm Don Taylor, resident of Adrian. I'm here representing the Art Delicious Committee. A brief recap of this year. We had a great day on Saturday, a wonderful crowd, lots of great artists, good food, lots of good music. It rained on Sunday. From 10 until 2:00, and so we probably lost about 2,000 or 3,000 people. But nevertheless, it was a wonderful weekend. And I'm here to thank you, first of all, for 19 years' worth of support from the city administration. We had to cancel one year, but this year was number 18. But I have to take my hat off to special people. Police Chief Emmerich, you and your staff are wonderful as always. He was also acting administrator during that time. DDA Main Street Director Jay Marks, he wears a lot of hats, very, very helpful, a wonderful partner for us. Michelle Dewey, we couldn't do it without you, and you know that. Matt Tomaszewski and Eric Kelly from DPW. Jason Lawrence from the Parks Department, City Clerk's Office for handling our food permits, all of our vendors. Lots of support from the city. We're an all-volunteer committee. The event is free to the public. Our budget's about $25,000 a year, and that comes from artists and nonprofit fees, food vendor fees, donations from individuals, businesses, foundations, our community, and the Michigan Arts and Culture Council. We'll talk about that in just a minute. As a Main Street program, Adrian is committed to placemaking and embracing arts and culture. The arts permeate this city like few others. It's in our DNA. You know that. So let's talk about the challenges ahead. We need more volunteers. We're very affordable. We might need to raise our prices. We need to broaden our donor base. We need to add committee members. You wouldn't believe how small our committee is for what we do. Many artists are moving away from art fairs and festivals. That's a real challenge for a festival or a fair that's an outdoor event. We need to continue to bring more visitors from the region who appreciate and can purchase fine art. Funding is our biggest challenge, and the Michigan Arts and Culture Council is a major reason why I'm here tonight. Over the last 12 years, 13 years, I'm sorry, 12 years, we averaged $10,000 from them every year. This year, we received nothing. This year, there is no money in the state budget for arts and culture, zero, as best we can tell. So if you think that's an impact on us, it truly is. There is no funding coming from the state. This is not just us. Every county in Michigan is impacted by this. It's unacceptable, plain and simple. And we ought to be really upset about this. But I guarantee you one thing. We will move forward after many years to come, and we will overcome these temporary problems with your help and that of our community. Finally, as chairperson for 15 years, adios. It's over. Somebody else is going to take over. It's been a real fun run. Thank you.
I just want you to know, people did go Sunday, Sunday. Hello, I was one of them, Don. Remember? I was brave in that rain Sunday. There were people there braving that rain. You actually had a decent turnout despite the rain. Yeah.
Several artists did very well.
Hearing no more public comment inside the city chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Hearing no public comment, are there any Commissioner comments? Commissioner Castleberry?
I, if you know my family, you know we're Irish and, um, we used to dye my hair green for St. Patrick's Day. So I think it's important to recognize cultures, just as it's important to recognize arts, things like that. Erin, I would never call you vulnerable. I would call you resilient. So please stop saying vulnerable and start saying resilient. I have three boys that, the widows, because if you've seen them, they're white hair, very white, you know, white, white. And, um, when my husband went through law school and college and we were working so many jobs and things, the family that helped me raise my children was Hispanic. My youngest spoke Spanish before he spoke English. To say that this town doesn't have that huge, thriving community is an insult to all the cultures in our community. I hope that we can continue to celebrate cultures with proclamations. I hope we can expound on that because Dutch Hill, it's an exciting part of our history, right? There's a lot of really neat things here. And I always talk about, St. Mary's Church used to have, I'm not going to say it right, they had a cultural, the ethnic festival, the ethnic festival. And it was so neat because all the cultures from our community got to bring stuff in. And so there was, you know, German, Irish, Polish, Hispanic. It was really, really neat and cool. And it was something that we could all celebrate. And it would be really great to bring something like that back again. And we can't, we can't ever degrade or negate, um, the cultural influences in this community. And to do, to do so would be horrendous. So I'm super excited that we recognize Spanish or Hispanic Heritage Month, and I think we can continue to do that in the future. Thank you, Katie, or Candy, Candy and your staff for all you do. I have done a lot of work with you guys. You do an outstanding job in this community. And, um, again, I wouldn't call you vulnerable. I'd call everybody that works with you and that you work with resilient. And, um, it's amazing what you guys accomplish. So congratulations on getting your proclamation this month, and thank you for all the hard work you do in our community. Thank you to Don Taylor. I got my pictures and I always get something really cool at Art Delicious. Thank you for all the work you do for that. It's an amazing event in our community. And I want to make sure that we stop saying negative things in our community. The hateful conversations are never going to make positive change happen. So if we can start thanking people for what they do and helping people when they need help or picking people up when they fall down, we're going to do a lot better job than, than saying negative comments. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
Sure, I have a few items. I'd like to thank the First Fridays Committee from the DDA for Friday's event. It was a unique event by bringing in the wrestlers downtown. But it sure did draw a crowd. It was, there were a lot. And I stayed to help clean up afterwards and just wanted to thank the, the DDA crew that helps do that. I know, Michelle, you did it for years and years, but, uh, you know, it's a thankless job seeing people out there picking up the trash, picking up the chairs and tables and getting everything done in the dark. So please, you know, please make sure you thank your DDA volunteers there. Also, Thursday night, the DDA has a witches' night out from 5 to 8 downtown. So a couple of the stores have an event downtown. I do want to address point of sale a little bit. I've been approached by many, many people. The information that is being sent, the, the postcards that is being, that are being sent, everything online, everything in Lenway Voice, please know, none of that is coming from your city tax dollars, none. That is all private, citizen-funded. So please just rest assured that it is not coming from city dollars at all and will not. So I won't, you know, tell you which way to vote on that. That's going to be up to the public. But just know that the city is not funding any of that information going out. The academy is coming up. I'm finally back to doing that. I just sent a schedule last week to our new city administrator, Chad and Michelle. It will run from January through March on Thursday nights this year from 6:00 to 7:30. And once we have exactly who's speaking when, we will get the application information out. The last thing is a little bit more personal. On my block, because we're thanking people and we need to do this more often, I have a severely PTSD veteran who struggles just three houses down from me. Adrian Public or Adrian Police Department was there two days ago. Kelly's son was one of the officers that arrived and talked him down again and again. And this has been going on for a couple of years. I don't think you understand what the police have to go through every single day. And I just want to appreciate them. So thank you.
Commissioner Banky?
So I too want to echo our thanks to the Art Delicious Committee and to Don. I know you say, "Se la vi," but you'll still be there helping in the wings, providing your, 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 your years of wisdom. So thank you for that. The other First Friday event that took place out at the fairgrounds, we were fortunate to have three active-duty U.S. Marines there participate in the Toys for Tots kickoff campaign for Lenway County. And we were able to collect 310 toys that will be distributed to roughly 1,500, if not more, children throughout Lenway County this year. So thanks to those Marines that showed up and put children first in the middle of a government shutdown as well. That does not impact them. November 22nd, we do have, speaking about our diverse cultural heritage, the Chico Cinco de Mayo group wants to continue to reach back and help the community. So they are hosting a dance at the Blissfield American Legion, which proceeds, and toys will also benefit Toys for Tots and the children in the community. So again, continued great work with our community, helping to make sure that when the children of Lenway County wake up Christmas morning, that they are able to celebrate the holidays appropriately and families can continue to provide gifts for their children. Sadly, it is October 6th, and my Toys for Tots request-o-meter has gone off twice during this meeting. So that's from families requesting gifts and thinking about toys on October 6th already. So it is something that we're going to need to continue to work for hard in our community. And, um, thanks for the support from Friday and all those organizations and businesses that support coming up in our kickoff from November 1st on.
I would like to piggyback and echo a little bit both on Commissioner Banky and Commissioner Roberts about Friday's events. I was already planning to talk a little bit about them. And, and it's that, just like that's been talked about tonight by Commissioner Castleberry, but the stopping the negativity and just celebrating what we have. And, you know, change is hard. And when the car show moved, it was hard. And it was, it was hard for a lot of people to accept. And, you know, wow, a huge turnout for the car show, a huge turnout downtown. I echo Commissioner Roberts. I was in utter shock how many people came out for the wrestling. It was quite the event. There were a lot of people there. But it's really great that people are seeing, wow, this is awesome, that there are a couple things going on in town. And in addition to that, Adrian to come see rival game was also happening that night as well. So there were a lot of things happening. I do want to let you know, I used to work at Santa Heitz University, and my husband has a lot of friends that went there back in the day. I was with many Santa Heitz University alum downtown Friday night, right at the conclusion of First Fridays. And they could not stop talking about Adrian and how much has changed for the better. Yes, I said for the better. They were going on and on about the, the event and how many people were helping out, like tearing down the stage and just doing all that work. But some of them had been at the car show as well. Like they were asking for things to do Friday night before they, they were going to go out and visit our establishments. And so many had visited both or one or the other event. And they just said, what an amazing thing that Adrian has, that we have all these opportunities to come together and celebrate. And they wish that all those things had been happening when they were students at Sienna many years ago. And they just really thought that the change is very positive. They were very excited about what they were seeing in Adrian and around Adrian. You know, even the amount of hotels, because I want you to know, every single hotel room was booked. You could not find a hotel room. The nearest one was Chelsea, Michigan, as of Friday night, because there, there were so many people in town. But let's celebrate that. Like, I mean, they, there are great things happening here. And we can do different things and you can attend both, or you can just attend one. And it's okay. It's okay that we have all these different things because it attracts different amounts, different groups of people, too. And it gives everybody something to do and something safe to do in our, in our city. And it's just really great to see that coming together. The other thing, welcomes new city administrator, Chad. And he has taken over, doing such an amazing job. I know he's been meeting with everybody. And he's been out and about. He was at First Friday. He's been at everything I've been at. I keep running into him everywhere. He's visiting the restaurants. He's visiting all the businesses. He's, he's, you know, out and about and just really excited and just doing such a great job already in just a few short weeks. But you had a nice short meeting, you know, for your very first meeting, too. So look at that. But welcome and thank you so much.
May I get a motion to adjourn?
Support?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.